Good evening. I would like to call April 23rd, 2018 Belbrook City Council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of April 9th, 2018. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, ma'am.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements, special guests. We do have one mayor's announcement, and that is a proclamation for May, which is Motorcycle Awareness Month. I think it's very important that we understand that motorcycles are dangerous, but it's also hard to see motorcycles. So I will read this proclamation and hope that all of our motorcycle riders are safe. Motorcycle awareness, April 23rd, 2018. Whereas, safety is the highest priority for highways and streets of our villages, cities, and states. And whereas, motorcycle riding is popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across the state and millions across the nation. And whereas, in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness. And whereas, all motorcycle organization, clubs, dealerships, groups, highway safety officials in our state should join Abate of Ohio, Inc., and Motorcycle Ohio program in actively promoting operations, increase rider training, improve licensing efforts, and motorists awareness. And whereas, during the month of May, all roadways users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook supports and recognizes the month of May, 2018, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. I'm sure Louis, our cameraman, helped put this together, and so thank you Louis, and I hope all the motorcycle riders are safe this year. That is all we have for mayor's announcements this evening. Public ordinances, none. Introductions of ordinance, none. We do have one resolution this evening. This is a resolution regarding right-of-ways and underground utilities. Myself and Donna Seager-Lawson are going to accuse ourselves. We both work for public utility companies. So I will be handing this over to Mr. Schweller to run the meeting until this resolution is voted for.
Thank you, Mayor. Be happy to do so. Resolution 2018-R. A resolution designated certain areas within the City of Belbrook is being designated solely for underground utilities within the right-of-ways. Mr. Greenwood, please.
Thank you. Resolution number 2018-R. The resolution designating certain areas within the City of Belbrook as being designated solely for underground utilities within right-of-ways. Whereas, the City of Belbrook is a chartered home municipal, as defined by the Ohio Revise Code and the Charter of the City of Belbrook. And whereas, the city wishes to designate certain subdivisions and other geographically defined areas to be designated solely for underground utilities within the public right-of-ways. And whereas, the city is seeing to control any above-ground utilities within the public right-of-ways, certain subdivision, and other geographically defined areas for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Belbrook, Ohio. And whereas, the City of Belbrook has ordained in section 808.23E that all installations shall be underground in those areas in which the public utilities are currently underground at the time of installation. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves. Section 1. The City Council does hereby designate the following subdivision and other geographically defined areas solely for underground utilities being Country Square, Cross Creek Run, Green Meadow Ranch, Highview Terrace, Magnetic Springs, Maple Leaf Condominiums, The Meadows, Mill Pond, O'Rourke Platt, Possum Run, Providence Station, Regent Park Place, Ridgewood, Ryder Court Platt, Sable Ridge, Shadow Wood, Sugar Leaf, Sugar Oak Park Condominiums, Sugar Run, Sugar Tree, Sugar Creek Landing, Taylor Platt Edition, Timber Springs, Vineyards of Belbrook, and Wentworth Village. Section 2. That this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. City manager, any comments or any discussion on this?
Yes, basically, this resolution is ahead of the anticipated passage of House Bill 478 as it relates to small cell towers. A lot of these small cell tower companies are wanting to erect these on mostly electric poles as they are above ground, and unless we designate areas in which our utilities are underground, it's saying that no additional utilities can go above ground in those designated areas that already have utilities underground. So...
Is this supposed to support the 5G network transformation? I'd read a little bit about this, and I wasn't...
Yes, and I'm not 100% sure on the technological part of it, but it will seek to improve the cellular networks by increasing the number of smaller towers that are closer together.
So what we're saying is that we don't have an issue with those small cellular tower additions to existing light poles, but we don't want new poles like in my yard in Green Meadow Ranch?
Exactly. If there are no utilities that are above ground, then they can't erect a pole otherwise.
So will that prevent people who live in those areas where this applies not to be able to get a 5G network on their phones, or their...
It should not.
Okay.
No, it should not, as far as I know. But I can definitely look into that.
Any more discussion on council?
I remember something about putting that there was a possibility of them sticking a small cell tower someplace even in downtown Belbrook where we wouldn't particularly aesthetically want it. Is that...
Anytime that they would be attaching anything, they would have to come before the city for approval. I've looked at our ordinances, and our ordinances are actually written in a way that gives the city a lot of control over approval. So one of the things that we'll have to do as part of this legislation is incorporate design standards into our ordinances that say what the city is willing to accept in terms of the way that these things look and how they're attached and things like that. So that'll be the next piece that'll be down the road just a little bit.
I think the original legislation, if I recall when we talked about this several months ago, was that utilities could put up small cell towers in the right-of-way. And I'm not sure what the definition of small towers were. It could be 50 feet, 25. I don't remember what it was, but really what it meant was, to use my neighborhood again, that in the right-of-way, I could have a cell tower in front of my house. And I know that went back to the Ohio House and Senate to look at it again. I just don't know what the outcome of that was. I know that this bill seemed to have a lot of support in Columbus, so I don't know.
It's currently on the governor's desk to be signed, which I think that he had 10 days from last, a day last week to do that. So it's definitely bounced around quite a bit. And in terms of, you know, what these may look like, that's also evolved quite a bit too in the time that this thing has been kind of battered around.
The, I think one of the things that we talked about last time was the size of these things are fairly big. You might not know. I don't know either. I just, that was one of the things that was brought up.
Yeah, from what I've looked at is if you look at this and research it, you can pretty much get anything from a very small, compact version to a larger-scale version. So I think it just depends on the company and just the cost of the technology. And I know that the city has not been approached by anybody that's currently interested in installing anything like this, so it could be another year or two before somebody does, and then, you know, technology can totally change by then, and it could be a totally different product that's ended up being installed within the city.
Sure, sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Keeping up with technology is fun.
Yeah.
It's always changing.
It's always changing.
Okay, can we have a motion with the Reds, Resolution 2018-R?
Some moves.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt Resolution 2018-R. A resolution designating certain areas within the City of Belbrook as being designated solely for underground utilities within the right-of-way. Seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Yes. Okay. Bring the mayor and council member Lawson back. That's our last resolution for this evening. Next is the city manager report.
Okay, so this is my first official city manager report, so that's exciting. So just a few things. Again, this is the start of my third week of work, so I'm still trying to get my bearings very much. I'm getting it all figured out pretty well, I think. But the most notable thing that's on my report is that there is a fire levy on the ballot for May 8th. It's an additional 1.75 mil fire fund levy. It will allow us to hire one additional full-time firefighter and paramedic, and it will allow us to also increase the number of scheduled part-time hours as well. So that would give us two full-time firefighter paramedics and two part-time firefighter EMTs on a 24-hour-per-day basis. So the city's website has a lot of information on the levy, so if anybody's curious as to how this could affect you, exactly what we're trying to do, definitely go to thecityofbelbrook.org and take a look at some of the materials on there. Everyone should have also received a postcard in the mail with some information as well, so that'll be on the ballot on May 8th. I also had a chance to meet with our engineer and our service director to get an update on the Upper Hillside Water Main project. They were both very pleased at how quickly that that project has moved along. There were just a few stretches of main that still needed to go in, but as of this week, those should all be completed. I have not gotten an update to confirm that necessarily, but they were supposed to be getting those last few pieces of main installed, and then they would start working on the connections to the homes. So I know that our staff will be coordinating that with residents, and they will be actually going door-to-door and making sure that residents are in the know about what's going on in terms of when those connections would be made. So that is it for Upper Hillside Water Main project that I have. Comprehensive plan update. I also met with Ken LeBlanc of Green County Regional Planning, and he gave me an update on the comprehensive plan update, and he had a draft of that, and he was able to give me a copy of that just Friday, so I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing over yet, but it's pretty exciting. I know that one of the things that I was pretty interested in when I started was I found the walkability study that was done a year ago, and then the comprehensive plan update, which is in the works right now. So I'm hopeful that this is gonna continue to spur some discussion as it relates to the future of Belbrook. So it's pretty exciting stuff, and I'm looking very much forward to working with everybody on that. And as it relates to the comprehensive plan, there is a community survey that's open until April 30th, and that link is also on the main page of the City of Belbrook's website. So we want to try to get as much response as we can from residents and business owners, and it's really important that everybody go and just take a few minutes to check out that survey. So that's all I have. And then I had also submitted financial update, which I guess will be a little bit later on the agenda. So that's it for me.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
That project, is people doing okay with it? I mean, is there no complaints much, or...
I have not heard any since I've been here. I haven't received any emails or phone calls, so...
Okay, good.
I would say, I was up there this last week, one of the nicer days when it wasn't raining, and I had the opportunity to speak with a couple of residents up there, and they were pleased with the way that it was progressing and the way that the contractor was handling the project itself.
I've had nothing but praise from the service director Dale as to the quality of the contractor that's been up there and just how great that they've been to work with. So it seems like a great company was selected to complete that project.
Thanks.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee report service.
New service report.
Safety?
I just have a few things, Mayor. House Bill 318 was sent on to the Senate. It's a bill to standardize resource officers in schools, and it was also pay for some training, I think a week or so, 40 hours. And they said it's bipartisan, so maybe they can get something done. I know that's a big issue all across the country, so it'd be nice to get something going there. And then, just a few things on the fire levy. I know we're asking for more money. Our fire chief, he's always looking for ways to save money. He's frugal, best way to put it. We already depend on mutual aid for a lot of fires and issues that come up, or if you have EMTs busy, we depend on other cities. So we're not, we're doing the best we can with what we got, and we're asking for this little bit of money. I think it's important. I'm voting for it. The thing I look at is maybe, hopefully I won't need it, but an elderly person, a sick person, or it's there when you need it. And we want it to be tip-top. We don't want it to be understaffed. And I just hope everybody comes out and votes. Thanks. That's all I got.
Finance and audit, Mr. Schweller.
Mayor, a couple of items tonight. Before I get to the quarterly financial update, I wanted to talk a little bit about the levy that's on the ballot in May the 8th. I know early voting started as early as, I believe, April the 10th. And I looked on the sample ballot I got from my precinct, and it just says, "Proposed Tax Levy, City of Belbrook." So this does not have an issue number on it on the ballot, so it may be a little bit confusing what you're voting for. But again, 1 3/4 mils. This is very significant to us. It's gonna provide the city with slightly more than $300,000 in revenue, and this in large part is gonna be used to help offset some of the cuts made by the state with the personal property tax, the local government fund. And essentially, we lost in excess of probably close to $260,000 a year. If we don't do something to make it up, we're gonna be forced to have to change the level of services that our citizens have become very much accustomed to having in the community. And I think that's something we don't want to do, so I certainly urge your support for our city to vote yes and vote in favor of the levy for the additional income tax for the, I'm sorry, the additional property tax for the City of Belbrook. And again, it's 1.75 and not a specific issue number on the ballot. Secondly, we have to, as a result of the 2016 audit, we need to go through and accept the financial reports on a quarterly basis as provided by the city manager. She has, in fact, provided me with that report, and I can tell you that revenues actual through March 31, 2018 are $2,449,769, which is up very slightly from what it was through the same period, 3/31, 2017. Primarily, we have not received the homestead and the rollback monies yet, and also, we received the tap-in fees for the waterford development, which caused a huge increase in our tap-in. I think, as we talked about that before, the tap-in fees for Waterford came pretty much all in one batch instead of becoming proportionally as the community started to develop. On the expenditure side, the expenses are substantially less than what we had the same time last year, but the biggest difference there is the capital outlay. And again, the capital is in excess of $1.5 million for 2018, but right now, we haven't paid for the biggest piece, which is gonna be the Upper Hillside project. Once that comes in, we'll be very much in line with what we have in our budget, which is, we budget $1.5 million. So overall, we're pretty much tracking very close to where we need to be. We're doing as much as we can with what we have. The other item we look at is the capital, and in capital expenditures, we analyze every project, and some of them are as small as $2,000, just to make sure that we get the best price on everything we can and to make sure that we fall in line with the budget. So our budget is very detailed as regard to the capital, so we try to track both the operating and the capital expenditures. At this point in time, I can tell you that we're very much in line with the budgets approved for 2018. Anything else to add, Melissa or Bob?
Yeah.
We do need to pass a motion, so would you like to make a motion to accept the 3/31-18 quarterly financial update? May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to accept 3/31-18 quarterly financial update, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Community affairs.
Just a reminder, if anyone needs it at this point in time, that the Sugar Maple Festival is this weekend, opens with the dog show Friday night, and the parade is...
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. Chris, you ain't gonna talk about it, which is good, 'cause I'm losing my voice. So come out this weekend and have fun.
Moving on, any old business to come for us this evening?
Yes, I guess I have some old business, 'cause I raised a new business last time. But the developer that was trying to develop that plot of land on...
Oh, yes.
...Boys and Pike, I understand has withdrawn his request. So there was originally a scheduled meeting for tomorrow night at the middle school, and that's been canceled.
That is correct. It's over, has withdrawn that request.
He put it on the shelf.
At this time.
At this time, yes.
And that is in the township for the record. It's not in the City of Belbrook, but I know a lot of Belbrook residents were very interested in it, so it is important to tell them that that meeting was canceled. So thank you very much, Donna. Anything else on old business? New business? We have a couple things this evening. One is public records training. Mayor and council appoint Jamie as a designee. What do we, we need a...
Just a motion.
A motion. Any questions or comments on that?
Pretty routine.
Pretty routine. May I have a motion for public records training to appoint Jamie Kenyon as a designee?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Mr. Edwards, do you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McGill to appoint Jamie Kenyon as a designee for public records training, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
One other thing. And May 17th and 19th, Belbrook Sherwood Creek Chamber of Commerce and the community will have our community garage sale. And as we have done in years past, we do waive the sign ordinance for the community garage sale. That will be from May 17th to May 19th. This is really a big event, and it's been an event that's been very successful. It's quite amazing how many people have garage sales during that time. So I would like to have a motion to waive the sign ordinance for the community garage sale, May 17th and 19th.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to waive the sign ordinance for the community garage sale, May 17th through the 19th, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, open discussion. Nick?
Just want to encourage everyone to go vote for the fire levy on May 8th, and also come down to the Sugar Maple Festival this weekend. I'm just looking at my phone. It looks like it might be sunny and warm. Am I guaranteeing that?
Fire levy, very important. Let's vote. That's all I got.
Very similar thoughts. Fire levy is most important to us. We haven't collected any additional money since 2009 on that fund, so it is important for us to continue the standards that we, and the service that we supply to our citizens for fire and rescue and EMS services. The other thing I would like to say is, I'm very appreciative of the new city manager and the way that she's presented, you know, certain information for us here. It's gonna be like a seamless transition, it seems like, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I concur with what's been said.
I agree. The only other thing I was gonna add about the fire levy is the property tax. Most of the property tax actually goes to the schools, and the city is actually only a very small portion of the taxes that goes to the schools.
22% city, 55 schools. And then the rest are Green County and parks. Mr. Schweller?
Mayor, I'm not sure everybody needs another reminder, but my, again, would be to support the fire levy. It's very important to us. $61 for $100,000 valuation. It's not a huge cost, but we get out of it. As we get into getting a, or becoming a more aged population and so forth and so on, the EMS calls seem to be on the rise, and I think it's very important. It's something that we've grown accustomed to, and if we can get your vote, we can continue at the same level of services going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Schweller. I guess on that, I just would point out one thing. I know people are used to seeing replacement levies, and we're doing an additional levy, and some people may wondering why we're doing that. And it is complicated, but since the state cut, or local government fund, tames for personal property tax, and then also the estate tax, what they also did is anytime you replace a levy, you lose a homestead exemption, home occupancy exemption, and also the non-commercial exemption. So if we would pass a levy with a replacement where we could probably get almost as much money now, since the last appraisal, you would lose those, and it would be pretty substantial dollars that, on the ballot, it wouldn't say that, but the net would be that you would be paying more taxes, and us as council have said, that's just not right to do. So it's harder to get passed, we understand that, and it's also very important to understand how much revenue we've lost through the state cuts, and that we have made cuts ourselves with merging Dispatch to, with the Sherwood Creek Township, moving into Xenia, which that has worked out very well. We're both on the same Dispatch channel now, so we both hear everything that's going on in the township and city, and it makes it safer. So I would encourage people to come out and vote, and also do some research on the other candidates. It's also important, this is a primary, so you'll have governor, you're gonna have county commissioners, you're gonna have clerk courts. So there's a lot of things out there. Please do your research and try to pick the best candidate. And that's all I have, and this is open discussion. So if anyone out there would like to come up, you have five minutes, and you need to say your name and address. I see Chris, our chamber director, jumping.
Hey, everybody. I want to welcome Melissa. The chamber and the community is happy to have her, and we look forward to working with her as we go forward. So we already met with her, so we already had a conversation about some things, so I think you guys are in good hands. The big event this weekend, Sugar Maple Festival, and the title this year is 40 Years in the Making, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Friday night starts at 5:00. The vendors open. The dog show starts at 6:30, but registration's at 6:00. Bob, you gonna be in this one?
The dog show? No.
Oh, okay. Bob usually wins when he brings his dogs, but anyways. It's behind Sugar Creek Elementary, and if it rains that evening, it's the next evening. The rain date would be the following night. The Beer Garden is both nights up at Brookside Garage, starts at 5:00, goes till 10:00. Lots of really good bands. If you want more information, go to the website, which is sugarmapplefestival.com. They list everything on that website. It's very comprehensive this year, so it's got a lot of information if you want that. On Saturday, the 5K run is at 9:00 at Sugar Creek Elementary. The parade starts at 10:30, but they'll block off all the roads before that, so if you need to get through town, do it way before 10:00. The festival hours are 10 to 7 on Saturday, 11 to 5 on Sunday. The park hours, because they're a little bit different, because they have organizations and children's activities, and they shut them down before the Beer Garden starts. So the park is 11 to 4 Saturday and 12 to 4 on Sunday, and that's where they have free children's activities, face painting, all sorts of fun stuff for the kids. All the organizations are in the park, lots of music, both in the park, in front of the fire department, and, or next to the fire department. And then, of course, the Beer Garden will have lots of really contemporary rock, pop, rap, whatever. Anyway, those bands are listed on the website. Also, the, they did this last couple of years. The Belbrook High School Musical is this weekend. It is thoroughly modern milli, so you can go to the festival one day, you can go to the musical one night. There's a lot going on this weekend. So, that is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Bel Brook High School. The Chamber will have their tent in Bel Brook Park, and that's where you can come and sign up for the community garage sale, which, as Bob mentioned, is May 17th, 18th, and 19th. We average over 120 sign-ups on this every year. That doesn't include the 20 or 30 garages that open their doors and don't put theirs on our list. The list will be available on our website on Tuesday. People can print it off, and then they'll have the addresses and the dates that the people have signed up to have their garage sales. It's a great event. Appreciate the city waiving the sign ordinance, 'cause I get calls all the time, can I put signs wherever? Yes, they can put signs wherever. I do tell them to please take them down by Sunday evening, so hopefully that is the case, because we don't want the zoning department to have to run around taking the signs down. It's also the same weekend as the big hamvention. So, there will be a lot, there's just gonna be a lot of people around here. So, the hamvention is exactly the same time as our community garage sale. That's over at the Green County Fairgrounds, and, and last year, they had thousands and thousands of people over there. So, some of them may venture down here. They come in on Thursday, and they're here till Sunday, so some of those people could venture down this way for some of the sales. The legislative breakfast is Friday, May 4th, at the Green County Career Center at 7:30 a.m. That's where you can meet any of your legislators, you can ask them questions. There's a lot of important people from Green County, lots of just regular people there. It's a big event. So, if anybody wants to go to that, please RSVP to me, to the Chamber office, 848-4930, 'cause I have to put the reservations in for that. The Chamber sponsors the pet expo. This will be our second year, and it'll be Friday, June 15th. It's in conjunction with a Sugar Creek Township Farmer's Market, which, by the way, is moving, so it won't be next to the Kettering Health Network anymore building. It'll be up behind Fazoli's. So, in that parking lot that is just a little bit north of where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and those, it'll be in that parking lot. So, that is gonna be when, when they start doing that, at the very first day of Farmer's Market. Anyway, there will be lots of activities for pets. We'll have the bird farm, everybody brings their dogs. It's, it was a really fun event last year. We will probably have to rent some grass from somebody, because we're gonna have a lot of pets, and asphalt, I don't think works really well on dog pads, so we have to figure that part out. But anyway, that will be Friday, June 15th, and that's from 3 to 6 p.m. That information's on our website, which is belbrook sugar creek chamber dot com. And then we also have a new event, which is in honor of the 50th anniversary of the Little Miami River being designated a national scenic river. So, on July, Sunday, July 1st, we're having an event with Green County Parks, Bel Brook Sugar Creek Parks, Little Miami River Cleaners, and the Chamber of Commerce, and that's called Paddles in Flight, and you can bring your own canoes, your own kayaks, whatever you have, or you can rent them, and you'll go in at Mill Bridge Launch and go down, well, you can go farther if you want to, but you could get off there at the canoe livery. And then the park district's gonna get these gigundus balloons, and kids can also fly their own kites. So, they're gonna have big kites, balloons, little kites, people can bring their own kites down there. This is from 2 to 5 on July 1st. We're also gonna have a paddle parade, so people can dress up and, and go down the river, and there will be people judging as you go down the river. So, it'll be a really fun event. We have this river in our community, and nobody ever, other than the few people that go in and, and go canoeing, we don't get the opportunity to use it. So, it, it's a day that should be a lot of fun. There'll be food, there'll be vendors, there'll be a lot of, a lot of neat things to do. So, it'll be a brand-new event, and that's Sunday, July 1st. And then the last is in development, since we have new people in our community, including the, the new superintendent who has hit the ground running but doesn't officially start for, you know, a couple of months yet. The Chamber wants to do a meet and greet, so we will have city people, township people, school district, and the place to be determined will be, we're trying to work that out, probably be at, at a school building, but an opportunity, get the information out to all the community, come and meet your leaders. All the people, there's a lot of change, so it's a, a good way for people to come and, and meet a lot of the people who do things in their community that make a difference. So, anyway, that's probably gonna be towards the end of July. That has to be firmed up, just because we have to figure out what works for all you guys. So, anyways, so that's coming. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Chris. Mr. Saban, are you gonna?
No, mine.
I think we got something important coming up in a couple weeks.
Welcome to the new city manager, and a couple new faces since I've been here. It's been a while. Twelve years ago, we came into the community to start a church here, and we ended up in this building that used to be the American Legion Hall. And after a few years of meeting there, just on a Sunday morning, we were able to convert that old bar into a community coffee house, and it's become a neighborhood gathering place, you know, a good place for folks in the community to come, so we want to invite you to Bellhop Cafe. We also, as a church, network with the other churches in the community. We host the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Ministerial Association, and a very active group that involves people other than just the pastors and ministerial association folks, other people that are in, in servicing our community, the Chamber, the police and fire occasionally are there at our meetings once a month. We're happy to, once again, host at Bellhop Cafe, a National Day of Prayer gathering for Bel Brook and Sugar Creek Township and the residents and the community here. This'll be our 10th, 10th time of, of hosting that, along with the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Ministerial Association. The National Day of Prayer is May the 3rd. It's always the first Thursday in May nationally, and our community then meets at the same time. We'll be meeting at the cafe from 9 a.m. until 9:55 a.m. There's a miracle that happens when you get eight to 10 pastors, all praying for different parts of our community, and they can do that in less than an hour, you know that's, 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 that's quite a feat. But we have enjoyed participation of our mayor, city council members, township trustees, fire and police in the community, and the business community as well. The, the Chamber of Commerce has very, been very supportive, so we extend our invitation on behalf of the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Ministerial Association to any of you that can be here. I encourage residents of the community to come and, and join us in praying for our city, our township, our region, state, and, of course, the nation as a National Day of Prayer. So, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saban. This is open discussion. Anyone else? You say your name, address, and.
My name's Alan Amaro. I live at 2132 Marcha Drive, and I'm an employee of the Dayton Power and Light Company. I recently volunteered to serve as an ambassador to the City of Bel Brook through the company's ambassador, community ambassador program. So, I hope to be a fixture here at these meetings going forward, and to the extent that I can be a resource to any of you with any issues or concerns you may have that pertain to Dayton Power and Light, I'll be happy to help as best I can.
Well, Alan, 29 years ago, that's how I started, with you now coming to these meets. So.
You're still here, okay.
And 18 years ago, that's how I was.
And I know his dad.
So, in 20 years, you'll be mayor. That's what I heard, right? Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they would like to say? I see Louis coming.
I'm Louis Schatzberg. I live at 482 Ridge Top Drive here in Bel Brook. I want to thank the city council and the mayor, city manager, for the proclamation[1714.63]